Counselor Kaiser.
Present.
Counselor Anderson.
Present.
Counselor Nanki.
Here.
Counselor Leon.
Here.
Counselor Osick.
Here.
Counselor Hoy.
Here.
Counselor Nordike.
Here.
Counselor Lewis.
Here.
Mayor Bennett.
Here. Alrighty, we join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we're gonna go just a little out of order for a moment. I want to give Katrina Rothenberger, the Public Health Director for Marion County Health and Human Services, an opportunity to give us an update on the COVID-19 crisis. So Katrina, are you there?
This is Katrina. I am here.
Okay, why don't you go ahead and tell us what you think we need to know?
Okay. Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Okay, great. So as I understand it, we've been invited to provide weekly updates.
Yes.
So I will go ahead and get started. So my name's Katrina Rothenberger, Public Health Director for Marion County Health and Human Services and Incident Commander for the county's COVID-19 response efforts. The first case of COVID-19 was diagnosed on March 7th, and we currently have 30 cases of COVID-19 in Marion County. There are 191 cases statewide. Marion County began planning for our COVID-19 response in early February, and a full Department Operations Center activation occurred on March 2nd. This week, beginning today, the Oregon State Fire Marshal's Office is providing technical assistance and support to our incident management team so we can build internal capacity for a long-term response. Our public health efforts have primarily focused on what is called contact tracing. Contact tracing involves notification to all of the close contacts of a presumptive positive, including household members, caregivers, and first responders who came into contact with the individual. We then assess their exposure, risk, and recommend quarantine and monitoring of symptoms. The local public health authority delegates the contact tracing to the hospital, healthcare entity, or EMS agency when one of their staff is exposed. As you know, Governor implemented strict social distancing mandates in order to slow the spread of coronavirus. These measures are extreme but necessary and will help slow the rapid spread of disease. This is what is known as flattening the curve. And you can find several nice videos online about flattening the curve and the goals of social distancing. We've posted a few on our Facebook page. On Saturday, the Board of Commissioners ordered that certain county facilities would be closed to the public so we can do our part to protect our valued employees, their families, and our community as a whole. That is my update for today, and I'd be happy to take any questions.
Does anyone have any questions for Katrina? Counselor Hoy.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Do you happen to know how many cases there are specifically in Salem as opposed to all of Marion County?
We are not releasing the case count by city.
Why is that?
For one, we originally were not doing that because of patient privacy. And by now, coronavirus is so widespread that it would really provide a false sense of security. You can get coronavirus by going out into the public. So just by passing someone in the grocery store isn't necessarily going to put you at risk for coronavirus. It's really that close contact or touching a surface of someone who's been ill or interacting with someone. So it would be pretty difficult to do a contact tracing by releasing all of the places that an individual had been. And we know that it is so widespread at this point.
Thank you. You are sharing that with our first responders though, right?
Yes. So there is a little bit of a lag time between when a first responder transports someone and then we receive the positive test results. But we've been in communication with our first responders all over Marion County about the process of notification and when we receive a positive case. We do notify them as soon as possible.
But you, I guess what I'm not understanding is you've got many more cases than may have been met with, may have met with a first responder. I mean, I think that's pretty understandable with the number of cases you're describing and the number of people that have been hospitalized. So do our first responders have a list of addresses where they could run into this? So if they have to go into a building, they know what's going on there?
No, we have just basically said assume everyone has COVID-19 at this point and respond appropriately.
Our first responders are in a different situation. They're going directly into a place. I'm just, I'm kind of baffled by Health Department not sharing that with the understanding of confidentiality with people who will be exposed if they go into certain addresses. I hope you'll revisit that.
Yeah, I understand that concern. We have implemented in the dispatch and with our first responder team a series of screening questions so they can hopefully know what they're walking into. But the number of people that we have under monitoring that comes on and off that list on any given day is very high, and that would be pretty difficult for us to do in the first place. I certainly understand that concern though, and so those screening questions are really important.
Okay, well we'll-
This is Kaiser. I'd like to ask a question.
Go ahead, Kara.
Thank you. Ms. Rothenberger, so if I understand correctly, you're saying that, I guess one of my questions is, are these Marion County policies or are these policies that the state is dictating to the county? As far as disclosure to emergency workers?
We disclose when there is a positive case. We do not have the capacity to share every single household address with people for people who may be, become symptomatic at some point.
Okay, and I understand that. I guess what I'm asking is, is that a policy of the county or is that a mandate by the state?
It's really, it's not necessarily written out anywhere. We did do this during our Ebola situation in 2015 because those numbers were so small and the nature of the disease is so different. So that was done in 2015 in some communities. But there is a legal process that we would have to go through in order to share that information.
So I guess what I'm hearing you say is, there is no written policy about this. There is no official mandate coming down from the Oregon Health Authority, for example. This is just something that has been created in response to this incident specifically. Am I hearing you correctly?
We don't typically share that information anyway.
Even in times of emergency?
So if we have a measles outbreak, we're not necessarily going to plot those houses for dispatch. It is not our policy to share information if it is not necessary to do so.
Thank you.
Well, please know you've been asked about this, and you'll be asked about it every time you come down here, okay? Maybe you'll take another look at that policy or get a much clearer indication of why you're doing this. Okay? Anyone else? Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you. Have a good night.
You too. Okay, we'll move on to additions or deletions.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I move additions and deletions to the agenda. We have, excuse me, item 4.8, which is the addition of the Resolution 2020-19 and also written testimony on that agenda item. And then 5.8, which there are several attachments regarding the eviction moratorium ordinance with signatures 20-11, HUD eviction and foreclosure action, multifamily Northwest letter, and executive rule amending emergency declaration addendum.
Okay, discussion? All those in favor say aye. Aye?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes. Okay, council manager comment. Counselor Leon.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So I wrote something specifically about the SIT-LI ordinance that we'll be reading tonight, and I wanted to read directly from my statement. So as the second reading of SIT-LI SRC 95.715 comes before us tonight, I want to express my frustration. I was not on council for SIT-LI 1.0, and I did not vote then. I voted no in November 2019 for 2.0, and I voted no in the first reading of 3.0. Today, I'll be voting no again on the second reading. Over the past few months, we have received emails and telephone calls from the community about our unsheltered. Our unsheltered communities are not a new concern, nor is Oregon the only state dealing with the increased numbers. Several emails we received have resorted to calling our unsheltered communities as others and likened them to barn animals. Right now, we are in a public health crisis. In the past year, we have already moved our unsheltered communities several times. Each move has brought trauma and mass confusion. We heard the stories. We see the impact. We banned camping in December under the belief that we would have additional shelter beds. That backfired, and unsheltered did the next option possible: find cover under awnings to protect themselves from the elements. Now with COVID-19 going on, we've pushed our unsheltered back out into the elements with tents and sleeping bags that were thankfully provided by Arches. Yet, when I asked about accessibility to bathrooms and handwashing stations, the response was not going to be accessibility 24 hours, seven days a week. It was only going to be during park operating hours. I recently learned that the water and restrooms were locked for unsheltered during open hours. It is not open at all. This is unacceptable and a violation of basic human rights. In other words, we're forcing people, a number of people who have accessibility needs, to hold their bow a little bit until whenever. How many of you have at least one restroom in your house? When you get up in the middle of the night, do you go use a restroom? Now imagine how hard it would be not to even be able to use a restroom at all. Could you do it? What would you do? Our unsheltered communities have not become like this overnight. Many of them, as you recall, are Salem residents who were born and raised here. I want to ask my fellow councilors who voted yea at the first reading to reconsider and think about that impact. We push our unsheltered into the woods, into the parks. But once the COVID-19 crisis ends, which I hope is soon, what will happen? Several of you have talked about evidence-based measures. Where is the evidence-based measure studies that indicate success in passing a SIT-LI ban for unsheltered? When has it become illegal for someone to sit and lie down? Do you stand up all day at your job? Do you stand up all day at home? Our unsheltered have no home. Outside is their home. A number of them have jobs, and some of them are in school. But right now, there is no school, so they have no school. There is no place for them to live. What are we telling them? What about those with mental health needs? Are we saying that they are less of a person because they do not have a physical roof over their head? I know that when I leave Chamber of Councils tonight, I will have made a decision I will be proud of: a vote for our marginalized, ignored, and forgotten community. This is why I believe SIT-LI must die, and I urge my fellow councilors to vote no on the second reading. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other council comments? Counselor Nanki.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd just like to thank our citizens for a lot of the good things that are happening out in the community during the virus outbreak. One being keeping our restaurants. And there are some of their employees at workplace as we get takeout, what have you. And then we got an email today where one of the local distillers has actually converted their entire manufacturing operation to creating anesthetic at no charge for those that want to actually go pick that up. So I'm hoping people will keep stepping up. I know I took a couple of boxes of N95 masks and gloves to the hospital yesterday, and I had a call from some folks this morning wondering where they could deliver similar. So just thank everybody for stepping up. We still have a long way to go.
Thank you. Counselor Nordike.
I understand, Mr. Mayor.
Oh, go ahead, Tom.
Thanks. I have two things to say, and they both relate to the COVID-19. And the first is really in relation to what Counselor Leon has so eloquently stated. My question just is, is what is the effect of COVID-19 on our plans for the ordinance? It is item 6.2A. Did I specifically look at one of these things? Was toilet availability at the day spaced, and it doesn't look like that it's happening. So at some point, we don't need to add it now, but I would like the city attorney to discuss the interplay of the ordinance with the COVID. The second thing I have to say is I really urge everyone who hears this and everyone in the city council to take seriously the governor's orders that we're just reading today and to follow them. I will tell you that earlier on, I walked the mayor and the city manager and suggested we do something of the same. That was last season, so I'm glad to see that the governor has done so. I will say that this is just not a Salem problem that we should be concerned about. And I would use my son's experience. He was a doctor on the Oregon coast. And we talked this weekend, and he's just flabbergasted by all the people from the valley who are coming over to the coast despite the governor's pleas and orders and who end up using the limited availability of groceries and other things that the people on the coast need, including medical services and hospitals that, you know, without thought for their neighbors on the coast. So I really urge that people take this seriously and shelter at home, which is actually what I'm doing right now. And I appreciate the spacing. I can see the spacing because I'm watching on CCTV, so that's a good idea. But really, this is a serious thing, folks, and we should follow it. Thank you.
Thank you, Tom. Anyone else? Counselor-
Kara Kaiser.
Yeah, go ahead, Kara.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just like to, after the comments by Counselor Anderson, is I think if people aren't taking this seriously now, now is the time for them to take it seriously and to stay home, to stay healthy, to follow the governor's message, to follow the messages of other states. And that's the only way we're going to, right now, be able to get at the increase in cases until we can literally get everybody tested. The only way we can really prevent this is by staying home. And I do have to say, I'm pretty happy to see, while I've been out walking the dogs around the neighborhood, to see that people are keeping their distance. Most people are staying home. The traffic is significantly less. That's been pretty curious, too. But seriously, we're really at a tipping point here, and if people aren't taking this seriously now, I hope that they do.
Thank you. Counselor Nordike.
Hi. Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, councilors, for being able to be here in person and to all the folks watching at home. I want to touch on one of the many ways that COVID-19 is impacting communities, and that's through domestic violence. Ever since law school, I have been very involved in supporting domestic violence organizations and even helped put one together in law school because it impacts all of us. And I can tell you that through the Oregonian, they have reported that organizations that serve domestic violence survivors are seeing a spike in calls and a demand, an increased demand for emergency shelter. And it's no surprise because when you are in lockdown and in isolation with your abuser, bad things can happen. So I encourage you to reach out to our local domestic violence resources, such as the Center for Hope and Safety. They've been a trusted community partner of ours for decades. I know that they are working hard and that, like many nonprofits right now, their resources are stretched to the limit. So please find a way to give or support the Center for Hope and Safety right now because unfortunately, some people are going to take advantage of the fact that some folks are in isolation. And there is no easy way to get help, and so I encourage you to support those organizations. The other thing I would like to say is how COVID-19 impacts another demographic in our community, and that is, of course, our small businesses. You can always buy gift cards or order takeout, as I have done. But I, you know, like many people who grew up in here in Salem, they grew up working at a small business. I had an after-school job. I worked at Ranch Records. And many of us know how our small businesses depend on a daily influx of traffic to make their ends meet, to pay their employees. So I was concerned when I saw that at first the SBA had not declared this area an economic disaster area because it certainly is being impacted. I've talked to several small business owners who've already laid people off, a lot of people who work paycheck to paycheck. So this is a very scary time for those businesses and for their employees. So I contacted the SBA, and thankfully, I was one of many to do so. And the SBA has now declared the state of Oregon eligible, anywhere in the state is eligible for small business relief loans that are economic disaster relief loans relating to COVID-19. So I encourage our small businesses out there, if you haven't done so already, to see if you're eligible and see if those loans are a good fit for you. I know that we're waiting on the state and the feds to hopefully get an economic stimulus package going of some time. It can't happen soon enough. People have already been laid off, and there are more and more people who will suffer as a result of this. So those are a couple of things I want to point out for now. Thank you.
Great, thank you very much. This past Friday, City Manager Powers and I had a chance to go over to the hospital, take a look at the work being done there. I just want to say what a tremendous job they're doing over there in their command center. They've really risen to the occasion. And then I think one of the more interesting things they're doing is also they have a manufacturing plant essentially going over there manufacturing gowns as well as face masks and are turning out thousands of those. By the time we'd seen it, I think they'd started the morning before we went over, and we're really underway. It's quite a project. They'll be adding surgical masks, if they haven't already, to their list. I think we can all rest assured we will get the finest possible service we can expect, I think, from Salem. Salem Health, they're doing a great job. Mr. Manager?
Thank you, Mayor. To continue with the COVID-19 information and update, I would like to share with city council and with the public that is watching or listening what the city has done and will be doing. The city has been planning, reacting, and responding since February 28th of the COVID pandemic. This morning, Governor Brown issued an eight-page executive order, "Stay Home, Save Lives." While the entire order is significant to slowing the spread of COVID-19, several parts are relevant to the city of Salem, and I'd like to highlight those for you this evening. Under the "Stay Home, Stay Safe," there is a provision, there is the ability within the order for individuals to go outside and recreate activities that do not involve contact and where six feet of separation or social distancing can be maintained. So our parks will remain open. The park entrances will have signs promoting the proper social distancing. The city will continue to maintain the parks through maintenance, repairs, garbage removal, and safety inspections. And I do want to say, as I go through this update, as we all know, the COVID-19 pandemic is changing by the hour. So this is information as of this evening. This is information as of 6:24 on Monday. The order prohibits any social or recreational gathering. I believe there's a nonessential social or recreational gathering of any size are prohibited. So we will be removing picnic tables from our parks. We'll be removing picnic tables from the shelters and pavilions to discourage gatherings. The order has workplace restrictions. The city has been aggressively implementing social distancing and telework. We will follow the order's requirement to designate someone responsible for enforcing social distancing. For my socially distant walk-around this afternoon, this morning, I know our staff are taking that very seriously. There was a gentleman who was at our pack counter, and one of the planners who you know, he appears before you frequently, respectfully asked the gentleman to step back to the mark of the six feet. Information technology has been working long hours and weekends to add telework capacity. They will now shift to improving our video conferencing capabilities, including for this room and for council meetings. As you recall, all non-statutorily required city meetings have been suspended. Those with statutory requirements include city council, the planning commission, and the historic landmark commission. So our intent is to have improved capability for you for your April meeting. While the order does not apply to local government buildings, the governor urged all local governments, as well as tribal governments, the federal government, county government, to comply. Effective tomorrow morning, actually, more accurately, effective with the close of business today, all Salem city offices will be closed to the public. Availability of services online and by telephone has been promoted for the past week, past 10 days. In-person interactions with staff and the public, including inspections, will be by appointment. We will continue with our inspections. We will continue with the work that we're doing. But it will all be by phone, online, or, for very few cases, by appointment. To comply with the non-surface contact requirements in the executive order, all city playgrounds, outdoor basketball courts, skate park, tennis courts, softball fields, baseball fields, soccer fields, dog parks, and our cricket pitch will be closed. To ensure non-surface contact, all drinking fountains will be shut off. All permanent restrooms in the park system will be closed. To provide for our unsheltered residents, portable toilets will be located at Marion Square Park 2, Wallace Marine Park 4, Cascade Gateway Park 2. And we'll also be adding drinking water to Wallace Marine and Cascade Gateway. Those are as of tonight. If the need demands additional services or if the response of individuals who need those services results in extensive damage, we will have to evaluate our abilities to sustain that. But right now, we intend to provide the portable toilets that will be maintained and serviced and the drinking water at those two parks, which are, as you know, the parks that council has said are open for camping during this pandemic. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions at all? Yes, Counselor.
Thank you, City Manager. I'm delighted to hear about the porta-potties that are coming up. That is not a moment too soon, and thank you for doing that. You had sent us an email indicating that the emergency declaration had been implemented and that Police, Arches, and Salem Housing Authority had assisted individuals who are living on the sidewalk and that essentially those folks have now been relocated and they're no longer outside of Rite Aid or Nordstrom. Is that correct? And if so, can you tell us, did the transition go smoothly or not?
The implementation of the emergency order was implemented, and I believe certainly from my point of view, it went smoothly. There were some people who resisted, some individuals who resisted. But I think with the encouragement of our police officers and with the assistance of Salem Housing Authority and Arches, the individuals were encouraged to find somewhere else to reside. And as was mentioned earlier, there were supplies provided to individuals, as well as the continued- as the continued offer of assistance and making sure they knew that there were resources available to help them if they so chose. Police Chief Moore might have additional information for you. He's, if he's willing to come down and maintain the social distance.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Jerry Moore, Chief of Police. I think the City Manager summarized it very well. I think the majority of the people that were involved when advised to move did so. And I think the only issues we had were people that were concerned about where to go and what equipment they may have, and when they were provided sleeping bags and tents, I think they all moved. Some, of course, we explained the ramifications if they didn't move, and that caused them to move. But I would say, from the reports that I received, that we were pleased with the way everything went.
And the left-behind debris was removed by the city, and we're cleaning the sidewalks. It was either today or it will be tomorrow.
Good. Ms. Manager, one thing I would ask is, I would like, as time passes, to get a damage report on the facilities that are provided, on the facilities that are provided, whether to the porta-potties or to the water dispensing devices. Initial reports don't look real promising, and I want to see how that goes.
Tom Anderson, Mr. Mayor.
Yeah, Tom?
Thanks. City Manager Powers, I'm looking at your email you sent to the council this afternoon about the, oh, in response to the governor's order, and then you were talking in your penultimate paragraph about how often portable toilets would be cleaned. I'm telling you, I took a bike ride out of town by myself on Sunday and went through, rode through Marion Square Park and Wallace Marine Park, and there are already a lot of folks there, including people whose, oh, their worldly possessions were on the bike bridge or very close to the bike bridge. And so, I'm looking at pumping only three times a week the portable toilets in Marion Square Park and four or more times per week in Wallace Marine Park. I'm sure it's the same Cascade Gateway, and I would urge that they be checked on a regular basis, because I would guess that some of those might need to be pumped daily, and I hope that the staff would look at it from that perspective.
Did you?
Thanks.
Did you want to say something, Peter?
Yeah, please, thank you, Mayor Peter Fernandez. To clarify, the porta-potties will be, staff will check them daily.
Okay.
The plan is that they will be pumped every few days. Obviously, if they need to be pumped more often, we will ask the vendor to do so, but they will be checked daily.
And cleaned?
Yes.
Okay. So, as you get any kind of problem in them, they'll be cleaned up?
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you very much for that, Director Fernandez.
Counselor Nordike.
Thank you. My other question for our City Manager is, I understand that a lot of the information is being provided in Spanish, but what are we doing to provide information in other languages to members of Salem? We have up to 90 languages spoken in our schools, and I want to know what our city is doing to get the word out about the city's emergency declaration and other COVID-19-related measures that we're taking in other languages.
Courtney Knox-Bush, our Communications Manager, can answer that question, and it might not be much.
Thank you. This is Courtney Knox-Bush, and I work in the City Manager's office. The answer to that question is that we're not doing quite a lot of messaging in other languages. Marion County, who is leading the health response, is providing information in many other languages.
And as a follow-up, you know, I know that there are other websites that can be translated into multiple languages, and just in looking at the city of Salem's website, I don't see that as an option. And I'm wondering, just as a general matter, what are we doing to, is it possible to make our website translatable into several languages? Because I know that's a thing, and I know other organizations have done that. And maybe that's something that can be followed up upon? Yes?
I believe that, Counselor, I believe there's a button on there. You just hit it, and it'll turn to Spanish.
Well, I don't see the Spanish button, but, you know, again, my question is about other languages as well. No question, we should have everything available in Spanish, given the large number of Latinx community members we have here. But I, again, I'll send you a sample later on, because there are other websites out there. You can just select a button and have the entire page translated.
Okay, great. Any other? Counselor Nanki.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Falling back on the issue with the porta-potties and what have you, I forwarded an email regarding issues at Cascade Gateway Park as far as separation and following the rules that were put in forth and enforced through the emergency declaration. How often are we actually inspecting or passing through either Wallace Marine or Cascade Gateway and making sure that the camp sites are below minimum number and with the required separation?
Well, the chief.
Counselor, I don't know the exact number, but I can tell you, we don't have the resources to be in the parks all the time, and so, I would say very infrequently.
But there were a couple of issues that were emailed to us. Have we looked into those in aggressive?
Well, we will certainly respond to complaints, and I know there was one email that indicated there was a fight going on, and what we suggest it is if there's fights or something in progress, that you, that they call 911, and so, we can respond in a timely manner. Whether, and even when we get a 911 call, whether we're able to respond as quickly as we'd like, that's another thing.
Excellent. Thanks.
Counselor Leong.
Thank you. Excuse me. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I also wanted to let folks out there who are watching or listening in that a lot of the schools, when they close down, they did a lot of hard work to bring and organize to-go sack breakfasts and lunches for anybody who is anywhere between the ages of one, I think it's actually under one, one to about 18. So, there are, I believe, at this time, at least 30-plus or something sites in the Salem Kaiser area that are offering to-go meals, both breakfast and lunch, unless you only want one or the other, you could let them know. And it's from 11:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m., until they run out. And I also learned that you don't, if you're worried about your kids being exposed to the elements, you could leave your children at home with somebody and go and pick up the food yourself, and they won't question you, and the maximum that they'll be able to provide to you is 10, total of 10 breakfasts and 10 lunches.
Okay. Very good. Thank you. Okay. Counselor Hoy.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I move approval of the consent calendar.
Second.
Thank you. The consent calendar consists of Item 2.1A, which is the March 9, 2020 draft City Council minutes. Item 2.1B, the March 17, 2020 draft minutes for the joint emergency meeting of the City Council, Salem Housing Authority, and Urban Renewal Agency. Item 2.2A, transfers of fiscal year 2020 general fund budget appropriations. Item 2.3A, Salem Municipal Airport ground lease with Valmont Industries Incorporated. Item 2.3B, subordination of Community Development Block Grant loans for West Care Foundation Incorporated. Item 2.3, Domestic Violence Response Team Stop Violence Against Women Act grant. And that concludes the consent calendar.
Great. Counselor Leong.
Thank you again, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted to make one comment specifically about 2.3C, the Domestic Violence Response Team DVRT Stop Violence Against Women Act grant. I'm very happy and excited to see that the funding from this program will continue to support the city's DVRT team. As a domestic violence survivor, this is a very important matter to me, and I am just, you know, over the moon excited that, pretty much, that this disposition will remain. As Salem grows, though, I hope that we might be able to perhaps even expand into a second part-time, potentially full-time staff, especially as the need for it arises. So, thank you.
Thank you. Well taken. Anyone else? Okay. All those in favor of the motion, say aye. Aye. All opposed? Motion passes. Okay, we have no public hearings. Special orders of business. Counselor Hoy.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I move adoption of Resolution Number 2020-19, withdrawing the referral of Ordinance Bill Number 11-19, creating an employee-based payroll tax to Salem voters at the May 19, 2020 election.
Second. Second by Nanki.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. You know, we have a desperate need for additional revenue here at the city, but we are in a dire time, and this is not the time to be asking our residents to dig deeper into their pockets when we're in the middle of a crisis. And I just felt that the right thing to do was to withdraw this from the ballot and not ask the voters to place this additional burden on themselves. I conferred with the City Manager and yourself, the mayor, and I'm glad to report that you concurred, and now we're asking City Council to also concur. So, that's the long and short of it.
Counselor Nordike.
Thank you, Mayor. I'll be supporting the motion. Having spoken with a first responder on this issue, they recognize that first responders would be the primary beneficiaries if this payroll tax had passed. And I still very much support the idea of having a payroll tax, and I think that no matter how this vote plays out, I know a number of us on council fully recognize a need for a payroll tax, but are also trying to also recognize the fact that financially, now is not the right time. I fully believe that our public safety people are on the front lines of responding not only to COVID-19, but our homelessness crisis, and it is important that we adequately fund them. But we are already facing massive layoffs in this area, based on the small business owners that I've talked to. And I worry tremendously about people's ability to financially support a measure like this when there's so much else going on. So, for those reasons, I will be supporting the withdrawal for now, but I think that there will be a time and a place for us to revisit this and to really invest what we need to do in public safety.
Thank you. Counselor Nanki.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and I will definitely be supporting the withdrawal as well, and thank you to all who were instrumental in moving that forward to get to us this evening as well. As we spoke previously in this regard, I always had some issues with the equity in it, but also the timing and how close it was to the operations fee as well, and this actually puts some separation out there again. It's up to the Salem voters to choose when it comes back up again. So, thank you.
Very good.
Mr. Mayor, Tom Anderson.
Tom.
Thank you. I'm in favor of it, too, and I join the counselors who have expressed their being in favor of the ballot major when it comes on the ballot major. And I know that I had intended to be speaking in favor of this to a lot of public groups between now and May, and due to the governor's appropriate restrictions, we won't be able to go out and campaign for it. And I know the rest of the council who supports this motion wants to do that and would have done that. So, I think it's appropriate to postpone it and bring it up again when the council can give its full support and educate the public as to why we need it. Thank you.
Thank you, Tom. Anyone else? All those in favor of the motion, say aye. Aye. All opposed? Motion passes. Okay, we'll go on to information reports. Counselor Anderson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, I have some questions about the tree ordinance, which are the report on the tree ordinance, which is 5A. And I guess my first one is, on page two, it says, "The director informed council that the provisions of the chapter have not been met." Guess my first question is, why were they not met? I mean, they're in the revised code, and they should have been enforced. So, I'm curious as to why they were not met. That seems sort of a passive way to say it.
Mr. Fernandez?
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor. Counselor, I think that the report goes on to say that after the ordinance was passed in 2015, we had some changes in staffing and that led to some communications issues. The civil penalties were assessed. So, if you look at the table in Attachment 2, we had 10 cases, and people were cited for it. The part that we missed was the replanting process, and that's where the failure in communications was. The folks and the property owners were notified that they needed to do that. Our failure was in not following up. The property owners never contacted Parks Operations, and there was no tickler for us to follow up with them, so we fully intend to do that. So, it's not that the ordinance was not followed, it's just that our process failed in that we did not, in due time, when people did not call us to establish the replanting plan, we had not called them, but we fully intend to.
So, you're planning retroactive action on this now, on these 10 or whatever?
Yeah, there, well, there is no retroactive. They owe it to us when we cited them.
But you'll come, you're going to go talk to them and say, "Plant those trees"?
Well, in fact, if, Mayor, if you look at Attachment 2, there are some pretty significant penalties. There's some people that owe us, there's one property owner that'll owe us $17,000 in the replanting. The gaudy trees are going to be, you know, close to $20,000, $40,000. So, this can be pretty significant.
$50,000, Mr. Fernandez.
I'm sorry?
$50,000 by my counsel.
Thank you. Thank you, Counselor. So, yeah, so it's a, it's a pretty significant penalty because of the way the appraisals have to be done.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor, I have some follow-up questions.
Oh, all right, Tom. Go ahead.
Thanks. So, what it sounds to me like you're saying, it wasn't enforced because the staff did not follow up, and the staff did not follow up because you were waiting for the people who were cited to call you up and say, "Maybe we should pay now"?
Well, that is not exactly correct, Counselor. The citation that is issued provides the penalty, and then there was notice that said you must contact Parks Operations to create a, to enter into a replanting agreement. The code says that the replanting has to be equivalent to the amount that the trees are valued. The property owners did not call us, and we did not, our failure is we did not follow up with the property owners when they had not called us.
Well, it seems to me that normally, in any enforcement sort of situation, you don't wait for the person who's been fined to call you up and say, "How do it"? You want to check with them and say, "When are you going to pay this?", and make a schedule. So, I think that was a failure there, but I want to move on to the question. Is restoration, I mean, obviously, there are these big trees that were taken down, and you cannot replace the big tree. So, are the homeowners and the property owners who violated the ordinance, do they have to both replant a similar tree and also pay the penalty, or are they paying the penalty in lieu of replanting?
If you look at Table 2, Counselor, the second to last column shows what the civil penalty is, and most of those have been paid. The gaudy trees are still in the appeal phase. He can, he still has time to appeal. The final column is the appraisal column, the appraisal amount, and so, the replanting has to be in that amount.
So, you're not paying the money there, though. I mean, are they paying for the city to replant it? Are they paying a fine? Or are they responsible for replanting trees and paying the fines?
So, they have paid the fine, which is the civil penalty, the second to last column on the table. They still owe us a re-
I understand that's a civil penalty. I'm sorry. Oops, the appraised value of the tree. Are they paying the appraised value of the tree to the city?
The code says that the replanting plan has to be in an amount that is equivalent to the appraisal value. So, whether they are trees planted or a payment for us to plant trees at other locations remains to be seen.
Okay. I still don't understand, though. Are they replanting the money? Or are they replanting the trees? Are they going to pay $50,000 in appraised value of the tree?
They owe us that amount either in replanting or- or in cash. But if they can, if they can spend $50,000 in trees and their maintenance, et cetera, then that's what they, that's what they would have to do.
Okay, and so they will have to show you that, in fact, they have paid that $50,000 to replant trees.
What the code says is they have to enter into a replanting agreement with us, and that is the piece that is missing. So the replanting agreement would be to that value.
Okay. Well, I would presume that when they, you finally get in touch with them, or they get in touch with you, that the council could see what the replanting agreement is and how it's going to be carried out.
We can certainly provide a report to council on the implementation of the ordinance for those. Is it seven, Director Fernandez? Eight property owners?
Something like that. Seven or eight property owners.
Yes, we can-
Well, I think that's terrific, and I just want to say that $50,000 is not going to replace those trees. You're not going to get the same-sized trees and everything else. But I will say, I'm very encouraged by the fact that now tree owners in the city know that this could happen to them if they take down trees on the city right away, and I hope that will act as some sort of detriment. Thank you.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor, Jim Lewis, please.
Yes, Jim.
You know, I'm willing to let the information go by, but I'm looking forward to the May 18 work session. I quite frankly have an issue with placing high values on a tree. You know, I recognize how valuable trees are, but, you know, accidents do happen. And to extort this kind of money, you know, and I don't want to go any further right now, but I look forward to the work session on the 18th.
Great, I'm sure we all will. Okay, any?
Mr. Mayor, I have also a comment on 5E, if that's possible.
5E?
Yes.
Okay.
This is for, I don't know if Mr. Wright is there, maybe the city manager can describe this, but there is condition number two, which talks about trees shall be planted through the, it says, "Install street trees to the maximum extent feasible along the frontage of Perkew Industrial Drive Southeast." And I guess my question is, could someone define maximum extent possible? That seems like a pretty vague standard.
Yeah, we'll have Lisa come down and explain maximum extent.
Hi, Lisa Anderson-Ogilvy, you're planning administrator. That's actually what the code says for street trees, so there's no standard for how close or how far apart they can be. So we look for street trees that meet the spacing based on the type of tree, so that they can grow, they're not too close together. And then we haven't put as many as we can, as long as they're not conflicting with some sort of utility line, power lines, et cetera. So when their public construction plans come in, we do look for that with the public work staff, to make sure that we agree that they put in as many as possible.
Okay.
Well, thank you very much, Ms. Anderson-Ogilvy, and I would certainly hope, I would define maximum as many as possible. And then, Mr. Mayor, I do have one final comment on number 5C.
Okay. Go ahead.
Uh, thank you. 5C is another plan to divide a lot, 5.7 acres into 45 single-family residential lots, and this is on the development of the old state mental hospital, which is mostly in my ward, but Councillor Hoy's and Councillor Kaiser's ward above that. I just want to say, a lot of thanks should be given to the participants in all this, starting with both the neighborhoods who met with Mountain West Investment Corporation and gave some input, and a special thanks also given to Mountain West, who listened to the neighbors' input, and devised a plan that is pretty, it's a positive plan, that what it really does, even though there's a multiple unit development, it surrounds that with single-family dwellings, which is, would be on Park Avenue and also on D Street. And I think that clearly addresses some of the neighborhood concerns about multiple family right-abutting of the single-family area. So I would like to congratulate all the sites that have come up with what looks like a very good and appropriate development for the old north side of the campus of the state hospital. And I think that the conditions that modified so much in order to keep traffic from directly entering out at too many spots to Park Avenue and D Street were very good, and I appreciate the effort done by everybody.
Great. Thank you, Tom. Okay, we'll move on then to ordinance, second reading of ordinances.
Ordinance Bill number 6-20, an ordinance relating to conduct on sidewalks, creating SRC 75.715 and declaring an emergency.
Before we vote, I wanted to recognize the city attorney for just a moment on this issue.
Dan Atchison, city attorney. So councillor Anderson had asked a question regarding application of the ordinance. I will let the city manager talk about plans for restroom facilities and tents and whatnot, but the section 2R of the ordinance bill itself says that the city manager is directed to ensure that the restrictions in the ordinance are not enforced until the opening of daytime space that is protected from the elements and includes access to toilets. So even if the ordinance is passed today and goes into effect today, because it does have an emergency clause, until those conditions are met, that direction still applies to the city manager.
Very good. Thank you. I don't think we need to know anymore. Okay, want a roll call?
Councillor Anderson?
Hi, I'm sorry, my mute was on. Hi.
Hi.
Councillor Nanki?
Hi.
Councillor Leung?
Yes.
Councillor Osick?
Hi.
Councillor Hoy?
Hi.
Councillor Nordike?
Hi.
Councillor Lewis?
Hi.
Councillor Kaiser?
Hi.
Mayor Bennett?
Aye. Motion passes. Or the second reading passes, whatever you call them. Okay? I don't see any further business. Okay, we're adjourned.